Everybody should have a copy of this lengthy application. Looks like it's for fiber. Jason, did you look at this?
Yep.
You probably did, right?
Yeah.
Any comments?
They're going to be doing that in like three different phases as well, just so you guys are aware of them. The first phase would be their being lying, and then one of the subdivisions. And I'll probably do another couple phases for the other subdivisions. We have a pre-con scheduled with them for tomorrow morning to go through the actual location.
So this is down south Buffalo, down around North Lake, and then the Sagebrush area, correct?
Yep.
Also part of Indian Hills, it looks like.
Yeah, Jeanne Barre Heights. I've asked you this before, but you guys check up on them and make sure they put it where you want it, the depth and stuff.
Jason, since you'll be talking to them, you'll probably be talking to some of the higher-ups like the vice presidents or the presidents out there in the field. Would you ask them why they just kind of cherry pick down the main areas and don't go up to some of the other areas that are less served?
His house.
I made my point. They'll understand. Thank you, Jason. What is that address exactly? Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion we authorize you to sign the right-of-way permit submitted by ALO Communications.
Second. Motion by Woodruff, second by Weems. Any further discussion on this? Just for everybody's essay, we do have to check. Hearing no further discussion, roll call vote please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Bruns?
Aye.
Next order of business is authorizing the chairman to sign Form 35K for annual keynote filing by Lincoln County to the Nebraska Department of Revenue. Becky, you have anything on this?
This is just, like you said, you said our annual report. The treasurer and I worked on it together to get the numbers on the backside. It goes, we're part of the cities, it goes by the city's fiscal year and not the county's fiscal year, so it's October through September.
Historically, we've used these funds for bridge projects throughout the county.
Correct.
I think that that's been a relief for taxpayers, working to get a lot of our antiquated bridges taken care of, so. Colleagues of mine, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion we receive an order filed, the fee report submitted, oh, excuse me. I'd make a motion to authorize you to sign Form 35K for annual keynote filing by Lincoln County Nebraska Department of Revenue.
Motion by Woodruff.
Second.
Second by Weems. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Bruns?
Next order of business is to receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the Register of Deeds.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we receive an order filed, the fee submitted by the Register of Deeds in the amount of $20,769.86.
Motion by Wulver.
Woodruff, second for fee report?
Second by Hughley. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Wulver?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Bruns?
We will now recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. First order of business is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting that was held on October 31, 2022. Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes regarding the Board of Equalization meeting held October 31, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Hughley. Any further discussion or corrections? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Weems?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Bruns?
Aye.
Next order of business is certificates of correction and refund is submitted by the county assessor.
Good morning, Julie.
Good morning.
Good morning, Julie.
Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor, and we just do have just the one. It's an acceleration of the 2022 taxes on a mobile home that will be moving out of county. So we collect the taxes, so the movers, that's how they're able to move a mobile home out of county, is a paid tax receipt, so.
This is an acceleration of taxes for $784.74.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, we approve the certificate of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor.
Second.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Wulver. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Bruns?
Okay, next order of business is motor vehicle tax exemption, exemption applications as submitted by the county treasurer.
Chairman, I'd make a motion, we approve the application for exemption for Great Plains Health for a 2023 Nissan Rogue, used for charitable purposes and recommended for approval by Sherri Newton, the deputy county treasurer.
Second. Motion by Hugley, second by Weems, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Hugley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Bruns?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the application for exemption by the American National Red Cross for a Chrysler Voyager 2021 minivan, used for charitable purposes, and it has been recommended for approval by Sherri Newton, deputy county treasurer.
Second.
Motion by Wulver, second by Woodruff. Any further comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Wulver?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Bruns?
Aye.
Chairman, I would move to approve the application for exemption from the American National Red Cross regarding the Dodge Ram Pro Master Lox ban, used for charitable, charitable purposes in the, I assume, blood donation drives and so forth. It has been approved by deputy treasurer Sherri Newton. Motion by Weems.
Second.
Second by Woodruff. Any further discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Bruns?
Is there anything else to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization?
Thank you.
Hearing none. We will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization at 9:22 a.m. and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Are we going to keep that for keepsake?
I can't multitask this morning.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
I'm apparently just so busy reading that one that I didn't even pass through. I think so.
Is this a second iteration?
This is not, and neither is this, so if you want to let Tyler know.
We've got, Marlowe and Keon just got several.
Yeah, I don't know if he got the word or not, but. Let me make sure that. Here's another one. On him, from the same attorney? On the same wavelength, because I saw that one earlier, it was like, eh.
I thought maybe a second iteration.
There's another one. Another different firm.
There's more.
It's a firm.
Point stress writer didn't make it everywhere, did he?
All right, it is 9:30, we will move on to our 9:30 agenda item, which is discuss and consider a special designated liquor permit submitted by CJ Liquor and Tobacco for a wedding reception to be held at CB's Hideaway on November 19th, 2022.
As far as I knew, the applicant was going to be here, so I talked to Terry and she said, yes, he was supposed to be here, so. If you want to wait a minute, see if he, maybe couldn't find a place to park.
That's... Pretty much after that. Sure glad we can have a couple places out there for those election helpers. I should have known when she came in this morning.
Yeah.
Good cheap entertainment though, for us.
Built to avoid.
I think you've done a nice job on your public service announcements online, Tammy. I think you've done a nice job on your election public service announcements.
Trying.
Just another one. I think if we kindly let them know that those are the last ones that.
They're holding up the major shift to the new system.
So far, it looks like the forms haven't gone to come back, so.
Or even here locally. Here's another one.
Oh, it is, okay.
Just a quiet.
Okay.
Here's another one from that one. And another one.
There's two sheets.
I think so. I know, it just denotes those two sheets. One's for Adam and one's for the other. Take them apart.
Yes, let's take them apart and we've got to cash.
We got it.
Yeah. She'll have to attach a copy that you put.
T H one.
There's a membership with the chamber that.
Yeah, well, that's the, we allocate $30,000 annually to chambers to help with corporations.
So assign a book.
That's our, our share.
Cheryl, she had her procedure on.
Halloween.
What's she doing?
Been budgeted.
Yeah, she was doing okay. I think she got her mouth back off.
Well.
It's kind of a big deal.
Same attorney. Same attorney.
Last group loses, are we at almost 100%?
The only thing, I would check the dates on the date, but, because today was the last day. So like this one stays seven days.
November 2, received November 2, so we're okay?
Yeah, if we could just send a friendly reminder.
We'll see if she can staple those two together, I moved the receipt.
Do you want to see this in, uh, mail?
So I got three names. Do we have? We only have a couple minutes until our next agenda item. Do they have a caterer's license? Does not look like they have a caterer's license.
Is this going to burn?
Becky, the number on this application is just their liquor license, correct? It's not their catering.
You can tell, because they need to have the letter before, but I don't believe so. There was an issue with this one anyway, and we did call and tell them on Friday. They did not submit the application soon enough to put this on the agenda, and Veterans Day in there, they were not going to have the 10 working days for the, for the state. State requires 10 business days. And with the, with the Veterans Day in there now, is I don't know if they would approve it or if the state would have worked it or not. So we did call them on Friday and tell them that.
What was their response to that?
They just, they said, okay. I don't know if they, you know, just had not to come in then. As far as we understand, the status was still requiring the 10 business days.
Pretty firm by state statute, so.
I don't have the statute or their policy, but they've affirmed it. Veterans Day in there, they wouldn't quite have the 10.
You know, I don't know why we can't go ahead if you want to go with the next name. I don't know these people, but I could at least try to call them with business.
I mean, that's, there's no one around that, there's no one around the chat.
Set it aside.
Yeah, we can set it aside. We reserve that right.
Come back to that. Another one, seven, two. Same firm.
Yeah.
Yes, Joe Hughley, member of the county board of commissioners. We had a liquor application on by your company today, and time just about ready to expire. Nobody showed up. Is there going to be somebody come over here? Is that Chad? If you're going to, I tell you, you need to show up now because the next agenda item is up, so if you appreciate a call, and I appreciate a call back on this number. Thank you.
All right, I have I have nine forty a.m. We will move on to our next agenda item. Holding on to the previous one. Next agenda item is discuss and consider adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one, supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Commissioner Weems, you want to speak to this? I believe you were the one that originally.
Gladly. This was a national effort through the National Association of County Officials in their summer conference in Denver, and one of their subcommittees on veteran affairs promoted the idea that they'd like to light up all courthouses in the United States for Veterans Week in recognition of their service, so I thought it was fantastic idea and brought it back to all of you, so. I hope that they get massive participation. I think it's only fitting that they pay tribute to our veterans across the country.
I'd agree. I think that this is just one small sign of appreciation that we can offer to the hundreds of thousands of veterans, millions of veterans that have served our country. I think it's important to note that on an annual basis, as as some of these key figures that are in this resolution, nearly two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian life annually. As a veteran myself, I know how challenging that can be. We're expecting to to see an increase in that. An estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. I think that's pretty staggering. And I think it's indicative of some of the challenge that we're facing worldwide and nationally. I think this is a great show of support.
It is.
One that I fully get behind, so.
Yeah, with that attrition rate, it's just more important than ever that we let those people know we really do appreciate them. Again, I hope I hope that courthouses across America did this. I don't know what the status is going to be, statistics, Becky's or Tammy's checking in to see what Nebraska's association participation percentage is, but I hope it's one hundred percent.
Phil.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, uh, being the son of a, one of the dwindling number of World War Two veterans, this was very, this is very important to them.
Yes.
And all veterans. With that in mind, Chairman, I make a motion we pass resolution twenty twenty-two, days thirty-one, supporting Operation Green Light for veterans.
Second.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Weems. Any further discussion on this?
I do, I would like to just read the first line of the resolution. I think it's very impactful. It says, whereas the residents of Lincoln County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. I think that speaks volumes, and like Jerry, as the granddaughter, daughter, sister, and mother of a veteran, I don't think we can ever do enough to show our appreciation to Chris and his comrades who have served us.
So we'll have the courthouse lit green all week? If we pass this, correct?
Light it up.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Ruler?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution passes.
Send that down. We'll sign it while he's talking.
Yeah, I just gotta call it back to Commissioner Hughley. Okay, the number that I had a call back from was this one, so thank you very much. Have a good day. This is Chad. This is Commissioner Hughley. Are you coming down to this hearing? I think you were notified last week. Correct. Are you okay with this?
Yeah.
Right, so you're just. Okay. All right, we'll just let her go then. Thank you very much.
They're wanting to withdraw?
Didn't say withdraw. I said just didn't have time. They had a card problem. They probably didn't have time for the states. They said, I'm just gonna let it go.
Okay.
I just note that because of the phone call.
Well, it is a discuss and consider, so moving back to our nine thirty agenda item, discuss and consider a special designated liquor permit submitted by CJ Liquor and Tobacco for a wedding reception to be held at CB's Hideaway on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Commissioner just Commissioner Hughley just heard from the applicant that they are going to go ahead and just let this go, so we need to still take action on it. Colleagues of mine, what is your pleasure? We can deny.
I don't know. Do we have to take an action, do we?
If they withdrew, we don't have.
They didn't withdraw.
You should probably still take some sort of formal action.
Okay. There, we don't.
I don't believe they do.
Not having not, Mr. Chairman, not being familiar necessarily with this particular liquor vendor, I would make a motion that we do not approve the application for a designated liquor permit for eleven nineteen twenty-two as the timeline required by state for them to review it as because of Veterans Day is not going to be able to be met. Therefore, that would, I would make a motion to deny it.
Motion by Hughley?
And? Second. And for discussion, we did hear back from the applicant. He said because of time, they probably would just let it go, so.
Motion by Hughley, second by Woodruff. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hughley?
Yes.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Weems?
Aye.
Ruler?
Aye.
Brunz?
That's fair. It's a no show, especially if they don't have a caterer's license.
We weren't able to discern of the sheriff.
I know.
So.
I know. That's what I was thinking.
Nothing more.
Not no, but no, no.
I don't think that's.
I know. Self-control.
Cricks.
Yes.
Becky, these will have to have special attention paid to the line items. We're setting aside a pile. These claims. For the juveniles and.
Are they incorrect line names?
I don't I don't know, but they're on the old forms, so just FYI.
There's another one.
So if I don't know what.
Tyler Tyler said he would.
Tyler's taken notes over here.
But we're still paying him this week, correct?
Yes. They were submitted prior to the end of the month, so we'll show someone and see.
It's supposed to have different numbers on it.
Still finding that.
Yeah.
Maybe Tim wants to give that a little. I'm gonna say you'd think they'd be low on his list of priorities. I need to eat this one.
She should eat her egg in her sleep.
No, that was something they were supposed to get in by today.
What's that?
Was all their stuff.
Backlog.
Backlog stuff. The stuff over ninety days, the last time they sent their claims should not be said.
Right. It's gonna be pretty firm on that. Chair.
And here's July, August, September.
No, not at all, and I appreciate it.
And and today is the deadline for that. Okay, so.
We didn't have very many of them.
We're not done yet.
Yeah, there's still, there's still opportunity for more.
So, Mr. Chairman, so that we have a written thing, are you going to actually formally send out something on your hand on behalf of the board that says this is it? I understand Tyler's doing it, but we didn't get anything. It's not certified minimal.
Oh, it came from, it came from the county attorney.
The county attorney.
Who represents us.
Oh, okay. It was written that way.
In theory, the county attorney is always supposed to receive a copy of all these in advance, so that I lost to look at them. I don't think that's happening.
We took the appropriate steps to.
The letter was very clear that it was a directive of the county board to use these new for claim sheets.
And they've had plenty of notice.
Boy, another big gun here.
Morning, Chase.
Morning.
You got Bill Hickok syndrome? Your back to the wall. I noticed you're not sitting with those two.
No.
Good call.
No offense.
What are you saying about Brian?
Kind of redundant, isn't it? Come on, one or the other. Pick which one you want.
Always figures that costs quite a bit. They're gonna use it all they can.
It'll usually be Mary Smith on days.
Not usually, no. Not usually, no. There's a pretty big gap.
This is what happened when your judge was taking the trials based on singularity.
Two communities about the same sentence. Sewing water for the village.
September, probably.
Oh, thank you. Does that make sense?
Am I? Combination of both. This is a typical, though. From District Court, I see.
No, these are all county courts, all county courts. You had a higher county court judge who just waived costs. Just get out of here. The other judge, uh, would excuse me, imposed them to make them pay them. So the big check, that's because county courts used to pay the costs. So this is, this is not just one case, this is multiple. That's why it shows.
All right. It is ten AM. We will now move on to our next agenda item, which is received bids for a used motor grader with trade for Lincoln County Department of Roads. Deadline for bids was ten AM. Looks like we have two. We don't have the.
I don't.
I, uh, I do. I don't, I don't know how it's gonna work on that guy, but mine.
First one is from Murphy Tracker Equipment Company. Kent, you wanna help me out with this?
Yeah, I'm trying to wade through this.
There's seven copies in the packet.
Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, that's, that's just two deals of pictures of each machine, but in the packet, there's seven copies in there for the.
Oh, very good. Thanks, thank you. Much appreciated.
Probably Jill Leans idea.
It was, yes.
Sure of that.
Yeah, we, we didn't assume you'd be that on the ball.
We knew it was Jill Leans.
Who else would like to tap in? Did you get one? Becky?
Becky.
Still has spare, I guess.
You think they should look at it?
Okay. You want me to read these? Yeah, please. It would appear, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, this is submitted by, again, Murphy Tracker regarding both items were John Deere graders. Option one, a 2015 John Deere 672G six-wheel drive with fifty four hundred and forty-nine hours on it. Would include a six-month powertrain warranty. It would be a total price, gross price of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, less a trade offer on a 2006 John Deere 770D of fifty thousand. The difference after trade, one hundred eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Option two would be a 2018 Deere 770GP tandem drive with twenty-one hundred sixty-seven hours. Gross price on that unit is two hundred fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. This would include a powertrain and hydraulic warranty till December tenth of 2024, or five thousand hours, whichever comes first. Would also be in consideration of trading in the 2006 John Deere 770D again for fifty thousand, making the difference after trade, two hundred two thousand, five hundred dollars. Next bid comes from, we have three bids, from NMC Cat.
I need to bid, I've got, I didn't do seven, I did five copies, but it wasn't paper clipped at all.
These are all the same, thank you. Very good, thank you. Do you want to start with that one? Here's the first one. Number two. Yeah. Should we walk through this one first? Yeah, let's go through bid one first, and then we'll go through bid three. Okay. So, as, as noted, NMC has three different bid packets. So we'll just go through number one first. This is, uh, the submitted unit would be a 2014 Cat twelve M two with five thousand, five hours on it. Would have a price of one hundred seventy-six thousand, eight forty-three, and less trade of thirty-seven thousand, seven sixty, and Jason, I'm assuming that we're talking about the same unit being traded in?
Yes.
As previously noted on Murphy's quote. So the balance net due would be one hundred thirty-nine thousand, eighty-three dollars. This would also, as noted, be a one-year, one-thousand-hour powertrain and hydraulic warranty. Okay? You got, you got a spare for Jerry? Oh, he gave his.
We need to have this one.
No, we're doing fine down there.
We're doing fine. Send that one one. Jason, here's some of the pictures with the first one.
It's three. Eli, can you give them that copy of bid number two?
And here comes bid number two. Jason, here's bid number two.
Brian, I think we have, we have two here already.
Okay. So regarding bid number two from NMC, the grader quoted would be a 2016 Cat twelve M three with two thousand nine hundred fifty-five hours. Total list price, two hundred nine thousand, again, less the trade of thirty-seven, seven sixty for the same machine referenced earlier for a net price of one hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. They have this?
They have that.
Okay.
This would be number two for some pictures. Do you have sheet on bid number three?
Three, yes, we do.
Okay.
All right, moving on to bid number three from NMC, a 2016 Cat twelve M three, all-wheel drive with three thousand, four hundred twelve hours, less price, two hundred ten thousand dollars, less the trade again of thirty-seven thousand, seven sixty for a net due, one seventy-two, two forty, one hundred seventy-two thousand, two forty. Additional notes, it would have a one-year, one-thousand-hour powertrain and hydraulic warranty and a two-year, two-thousand-hour CBA filter and kits. Filter kits, excuse me.
And here's some further information on bid number three.
Kent, you've got pictures of the T units on the deers.
Oh, here, John, thank you.
There's a, two big pics.
These are the pictures?
Yeah, there's two of them.
Yeah, put them in the folder. Just leave it in there. Few items to wade through, gents. Do you wanna go take a look at them, or you?
Yep, I think we'll step out for a little bit, and we'll discuss and come back before you hear just a little bit.
Or, how many, how many of those machines are here in North Flat?
I've got one of mine is sitting in North Flat.
Both of mine are still in another store, but they're available for media delivery.
I, I just was talking about kicking a tire or something.
Oh, yeah.
Give you a few minutes here, or twelve, or ten fifteen, we got.
I guess I didn't.
Truck, so. And if you need to take some time after that.
Yeah.
We'll be here for a little bit, so.
So do you wanna study?
No, 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 nope. Nope, because I'm not going to even try on something like that. There's absolutely no way that the numbers means anything, any.
Exactly.
And so.
This is where we trust our employees.
Yep.
That's how come I ask, you know, sometimes a picture's worth a thousand words. You could kick a tire, I don't mind getting it next week, but we have to.
Right.
That way you get, give time for it to sell, and a little bit of question on it.
I agree. I mean, this is a piece of equipment that would be understood. Hands-on. Seen it up close and personal, and maybe they are.
And you know, the other thing is, get the mechanics to get it, let them look at the record, let them look at the oil, let them.
Yeah, if it's been serviced.
Are so important.
That net's been serviced, right. Don't go. Don't go.
It's a lot, it's a lot like cars. Stuff used to be junk at a hundred thousand, stuff used to be junk at ten thousand hours.
Correct.
Yep, and.
So good time to take a look at some maintenance records, too, and the oil and tests and.
Exactly. Oil tests is vital, bearing wire.
A tree for you, and a motor grader depending on how it's been used, cranking.
Kent, uh.
Yes.
Embodiment me, they take a week, we go kick a couple tires, look at some reports and.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Pretty hard to buy it on a piece of paper when you're.
Yeah.
I won't be surprised if that isn't their recommendation.
I should ask the, the bidders, is there a timeline on your bid?
Subject availability, too, same thing.
Is there a timeline? We're, we're giving them great latitude to take a look at machines.
Even if we had to go until that, I can hold until next meeting if we needed to.
Okay, well, we're not asking for anything out of bounds if you don't wanna do that.
Nowadays, it's just kinda tough with any equipments in general, especially used equipment, but.
Is it more comfortable, like, step out and tell them that I'm uncomfortable with it, or something?
You have a seven-day moratorium on the salespeople or not?
Just saying.
I was peeking on the app of those two there. Those guys might be eating pretty good there.
Well.
Maybe gonna make a recommendation anyway.
Okay. I like that. Exactly. Come prepared.
Mr. Chairman, since we have just a little bit of a break in the action here, I would like to make note of the fact that.
Go ahead.
It has been one year since the completion of the detention center addition. And we have approval from all parties involved that all the warranties are in effect and that, that project is, the warranties are closed.
Could do. Okay. We'll hold off on considering acceptance of the bid, uh, and allow. Excuse me, Chairman. Jason, are you, or do you have anything to lend?
We're discussing a little bit further still.
So moving on to our next item, receive bids for three new half-ton, four-wheel-drive, four-door pickup trucks for Lincoln County Department of Roads.
I have just one.
Just the one. Jans, Jansen Chrysler. Kind of surprised about that. All right, Jansen Chrysler, here in North Platte, has submitted three bids for trucks for the Lincoln County Department of Roads. They are Ram fifteen hundred SSVs and have a manufacturer suggested retail price of forty-nine thousand four hundred and ninety dollars each. Special service vehicle, three trucks total, at that price is a hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. Lincoln County gets a discount of nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars per truck. So the three-truck discount is twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So the total cost for three is one hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars for the county, which equates to thirty-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars per truck. Warranty is a three-years, thirty-six thousand mile bumper-to-bumper, five-years, sixty-thousand mile powertrain warranty. Time of delivery is not known, production will start in January. That's a common theme that we are facing economically across the board. They are all 2023, have an estimated mileage of twenty miles.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Jason, did you, did the office contact the dealers in town?
Yes, yeah, we did.
Thank you.
Another question, if I may, the SSV, are you familiar with that vehicle, the service, special service vehicle?
Um, I believe so, I'll have to double-check with some of the research I did already to make sure that is the same vehicle I was looking at, but.
Yeah, I was going to say, isn't this what we normally utilize for your department?
That's the first time I'd seen that designation, but.
Have you guys been happy with yours, Sheriff Kramer?
New truck at thirty-nine thousand.
Came in about what we were thinking, a little less.
Yeah, I think on this one, I would like to probably hold on it, though, just so we can do some research into some of the cooperative purchasing options that we have out there as well.
Good plan, good plan.
For these vehicles, so maybe come back next week to consider. That works for everybody?
Yes, I will need, I will need that, he can get copies of it, but I will need that.
Okay.
And I need the other stuff, too, please.
Let me step back out, see if. My colleague, Greg, quick, and I'll be right back.
Okay.
I think one from Murphy's on the bottom, do you have that one already?
These are all the same original, I guess you.
I'll take this one, and she can have those.
Two, three. Do you have one from Murphy's? On the track, there's one, each of them.
Yes, I do have Murphy's. She had made so.
You know what, they even come with your. Try to play.
I'm counting out of Cozad, there's a bunch that have the new stock on it, so.
Yeah, some of the.
I don't know.
Somebody probably got a template in their file cabinet on their computer.
Get at me.
Maybe. You've got a couple of dozen quarter-mile cases.
Maybe that the.
Automated by the.
I don't know. Get at me. Blame it on John. Right, John?
Easy to walk with most of them.
Jaleen, that was a big rain you had last week, wasn't it? More than we had in October.
It was quite a storm back there, still.
We're on the list for a helicopter, I know, just making sure.
You ready for us again?
I am. All right. So regarding the motor grader.
So I think in looking at everything presented to us, and taking our budget into consideration as well, I think our recommendation would be to accept the bid from Murphy for the six-seventy-two G, two thousand fifteen. With fifty-four hundred and forty-nine hours, unit price one fifty-eight-five with a fifty-thousand trade-in for net price of one oh eight five hundred.
And that is, that is an all-wheel drive, is it?
Yes, it is.
So you get that extra ability to curl into a ditch and out of it.
Perfectly actually fits the application of where we're going to be putting it in the county, so.
Do you have the ability to check on service records on this machine? You do that?
Where is the machine at right now?
It's in Kansas City.
So you're making a recommendation for Murphy Tractor and Equipment for bid option number one?
Yes. Is that, is that one? I'll have those in front of you.
It's option one.
Okay.
I have a question for the, for John with Murphy. Can you get those service records so that you can, I mean, you've analyzed them, you and Ken Rice and. Look for, so that we don't have a red flag on bearing wire?
Yes.
Things like that?
Yes.
Because I, I'm more comfortable if we have the ability to, Jason, to sign off on that service record.
We check them over, and like I said, as is the past, you know, machines, we get in here, if something ain't right, we make it right, so, I mean, how can we decide a machine didn't right, whether it's me or Greg, either one, I mean, we'll do it once.
And that does have a six-month powertrain warranty. Well, Jason, I appreciate your attention to the budget and trying to be as frugal as possible and get, and still get a good machine, I think that's commendable. But that is, that that number's hard to ignore, that's a good, that's a good value, I think, as long as we, like I said, as long as you can get those service records. Make sure that you're still comfortable.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to make a motion contingent upon the approval of sufficient service records that, you know, I think that that way we don't have to try to back out?
Sounds like that's the beginning of a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion if we accept the low bid from Murphy Tractor for a twenty-fifteen six-seventy-two G, six-wheel drive, with less trade of fifty thousand for a net difference of a hundred and eight thousand five hundred, contingent upon receiving the service records and having those service records be sufficient, according to the people in our shop, period.
Second. Motion by Hughley, second by Weems. Further discussion, I would like to note that all of these bids were good bids, and I appreciate.
You bet, thank you.
I appreciate both companies that submitted, and I know that a lot of hard work went into them, and it is greatly appreciated, you guys have been valued partners with the county, and I look forward to maintaining that, so. Colleagues of mine, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Wuller?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye. All right.
Thank you, fellas.
Then, consideration of acceptance of the bid for the three new half-ton trucks, we will hold off for how much, how much time would you like?
Um, I think we should be ready by next week.
By next week?
Yeah.
So we'll bring that consideration back before us next week.
All right.
You'll get that on agenda or?
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, John, thanks, Jaleen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have a need for a closed session? Okay. Moving on to our last agenda item, which is, here are concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives, and I will keep this item open while we finish signing the claims.
Yeah, it's just a matter of, staff actually does these.
Did you need any comments? Okay, absolutely. Take care, gentlemen.
I know who you're talking about.
Yeah, me too. You too, thank you.
Does it seem to you, folks, like we've been a year since that addition's been?
No, time is.
This year has gone by really fast.
Andy kind of caught me off guard when he sent me a notice that it's been a year.
He was like, I can't believe it's been.
Jerry, did we have a walkthrough there about a month ago?
Yep.
And I, wasn't the only thing, didn't we, wasn't there something, the alarm or electrical what was it, wasn't there an issue? Who was it?
I don't recall.
I don't remember.
Or a level of walkthrough?
Alerts.
I got two alarm alerts over the weekend.
Yeah.
Do you guys all get them, too?
I do. For asking time for safety, it's supposed to be taken.
Part of the time it's the west door, part of the time it's up in the corridor.
Is that corridor door still going off?
I think so.
I think there's ghosts up there.
And they're not for you. So both of the ones I received were. West entry door.
Yeah, I get those, I'm assuming that's why. They're usually before eight o'clock, so I'm assuming somebody coming over.
Yeah, six-twenty. And six-twenty.
Tammy, did you have anything for us?
Ryan? It wasn't eleven-month walkthrough, part of the. And did we have an eleven-month walkthrough?
I'm surprised.
We're weird, Jerry just got notified, that's what brought it to my attention. I don't remember.
That we only got one bid on the pickups.
Okay.
I'm going to surprise them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Jerry?
Exactly, and there's still none here.
My contract.
That's probably why.
We've not had our official. The architect's supposed to do that before the work year runs out, in case there's any.
Within a year.
Within twelve months, it's usually, we usually try to do it eleven months or eleven months a week to give time for a correction. And that's what I asked, I didn't think we did, and I called Ryan, I said, no, I said, I didn't think it's been quite that long, I said, yeah, you just mentioned it, so I'm going to get on the phone to those guys and say, hey, did I miss something?
Who arranges that?
The architect.
He's been in communication with the ref and with the home.
Yeah, but something we, it's kind of a formal thing, you know? Let me shoot my toe off here.
Anything I should be doing, or are you trying to get ahold of him?
No, I'm going to just try to get ahold of him, just.
I do have a question, on the applications for exemption for motor vehicles, is there a limit on how many a company can have, or it's just unlimited?
As long as they're used for charitable purposes exclusively.
Then it's unlimited.
Then it's unlimited. The question is, is whether or not everything is charitable.
Yeah.
You notice we drag our feet on great planes because of the fact.
That's the one I was.
They continue to add real estate to their campus, and then, depending on the math, what's, what's purpose, square footage is, and the assessor allows exemption to some percentage. It has to be continuous to.
Yeah, don't worry about it, it's a good place, but it's no problem.
Same, even though I have, I have certain, that organization has almost.
Well, I'll keep a solid one.
And financial assets.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, sure.
Well, and you got to wonder, because they do put in a lot of applications, is there like an audit or an accountability?
Between us and the statute, the assessor is working on things, as we speak.
Okay.
Trying to get it done.
Oh, we just dragged it, uh.
We were trying to keep it quiet. Yes.
Or anything else? He was maybe going to give us feedback on that. Okay.